Heidi, are you there?
Yes.
I have started the recording.
Okay, I still work at 8 o'clock. Should we get started?
Yes, please.
All right. Juan, can you tell me how many people we've got?
So far, we have seven. Okay, sir Frank, yes.
All right, thank you. So I will get started, then I'm going to turn it over to Juan, who will be doing some instructions. For those of you who are here as a first time participant in a WebEx land use hearing, welcome. I think all of us are still getting used to the process and we'll try to make this as painless as possible. I'd like to give you some opening comments. And then very briefly, I'm going to turn it over to the technical person for the city of Bend, who will talk to you about how you access and talk to me and how you participate actively in the meeting. So my first comments are that I'm, my name is Greg Frank. I am a hearings officer on contract with the city of Bend. Today is Tuesday, July 14th, 2020, at approximately nine o'clock in the morning. And the way we're doing this hearing is a WebEx platform hearing. The cases that we're involved with today are PZ 200179, PZ 200180, and PZ 200181. And I'm sure someone, if I made a mistake on those numbers, will correct me and then I will make sure we're on the correct one. This is a case that involves an applicant seeking a conditional use site plan and all gracious and review for the approval of a 60-foot tall cell tower at a 20-foot by 20-foot fenced equipment area at the address 2625 Northeast Butler Road. So those are my opening comments. Because this is a recorded hearing, I put that information on right to the start of the hearing. I'm going to be giving some additional instructions shortly. At this point in time, I would ask that the city of Bend technical support give information to those who are participating in today's hearing, some instructions on how they get involved and when they can get involved and what the screens are going to look like. So Juan, it's up to you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Frank. Good morning, everyone. My name is Juan Olmeda, and I am with the IT department at the city of Bend. And I would like to provide you some instructions to be able to participate in this public hearing. We will be using the hand raise function in WebEx. For those of you joining us via phone, please use the keypad on your phone and dial star three to raise your hand. The hearing officer will call on you based in the order that raised hands are received. When we call on you, we will make reference to your phone numbers, area code, and prefix. You will hear two beeps to signify that your microphone is now unmuted. Please provide your full name and physical address and then state your comment. For those of you who are joining us via WebEx, please use the hand raise function by clicking on the participants icon. In the participants pane, look at the bottom right corner and click on the hand icon to raise your hand. For all of you, whether you are joining us by phone or via WebEx, when you are done providing your comment, please remember to lower your hand to provide fluidity to the public comment piece. For those of you joining us via WebEx, you can lower your hand by clicking on that hand icon when you are done. For those of you joining us by phone, you can lower your hand by using your keypad and once again pressing star three. Are there any other questions? Anything else you would like me to clarify, Mr. Frank?
No, thank you, Juan. This is one of the few times in the hearing that I'm going to ask if there is anyone who is now involved in this hearing by telephone or WebEx, does anyone have any questions about the technical, just purely technical aspects of this hearing?
We have one question, Mr. Frank.
Okay.
I have calling user with 541-389. I'm going to unmute you right now. You'll hear two beeps. Well, hit.
Hi. I was just confirming that I'd done the appropriate thing to raise my hand. Do we now not raise our hand again until it's time for public input?
Yes, that's correct, but I appreciate you asking that question.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to lower my hand now.
You did good. All right. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions?
No, sir. I don't see anybody else.
Thank you. I appreciate the instructions, Juan. All right, let me give you my instructions. And my instructions, just so you know, are going to take probably seven, eight, nine, 10 minutes, somewhere in there. Most people at this stage of the hearing think I talk way too long and they want to talk, and I fully appreciate that. But what I'm going to try to explain to you is how these hearings work. And for most of you who are participating in this hearing, you don't get involved a lot in the land use process and particularly in the WebEx platform process. And so I just want to make sure that you understand both what the order of things are and what your rights are and maybe even your obligations. So bear with me for the next seven, eight, nine minutes. And then we will move into the testimony from staff applicant and any opponents. So let me tell you first who I am. My name is Greg Frank. I am a hearings officer. I've been doing hearings for probably the last 17, 18 years. And this is, I think, my fourth hearing for the city of Bend under the contract. I am aware, so you know, of who Verizon Wireless is the applicant or least a participant in this process. But I'm not familiar with either Selco Akuma or the consultant O and M Investments LLC. I don't know those people. In fact, I don't know anybody even works for Verizon. So from the applicant's perspective, I really don't know very much about any of those folks other than Verizon is a wireless carrier. I will tell you that I don't have Verizon as my wireless carrier. So I have no particular interest in Verizon's success or failure in this particular application. I have had no contact with the applicant. The applicant's representatives or anyone else associated with this case except for the site view, which I'm going to talk about shortly, and the staff. And that involves Ms. Kennedy and Mr. Olmeda, who you've already heard speak. I have had prior contacts with the staff planner for the city of Bend, Heidi Kennedy. She's a senior planner and she's assigned to this case. My contact with her has been of the nature of one of two things. Number one is she's tried to help me as far as scheduling. So we talked about calendars, scheduling. Secondly, is she's emailed me regarding accessing the public information in this particular case. So she's done those two things. The last contact I had with her was this morning and she told, she just confirmed that I had access into this hearing. And obviously I do. So those are the contacts that I've had with staff and no other contacts. Let me tell you about the site view. And a site view is something that I normally don't do, but the city of Bend really prefers that I do so. And therefore I am doing site views. And a site view is when I'm in my car, I drive to the property that is the subject of the particular application at hand. And I drive into areas that I consider either public or open to the public, right? And so I did that. And I did that yesterday afternoon, about three in the afternoon. I observed what I refer to as a subject property, which is I called a commercial property where I saw a dentist's office and a coffee kiosk and some other things around the other side. I drove into both parking lots, the one where the dentist's office was. I drove into the one where the gasoline station is. And so that I actually did, I did not get out of my car. I did not walk the site and look at it in great detail. What I did generate from that site view is a perspective. I can tell you quite clearly that I saw the construction on the roadway and it looks like a turnaround. I saw where I believe the proposed cell tower is going to be located. And in particular, for those of you who are neighbors, I observed at least setting up above where my car was were a number of same family residences. And I observed the proximity of those residences to the subject property. Those are the impressions that I received by doing the site view. I did not, I confirm, I did not generate any opinion as to whether or not this is, this application should be approved or disapproved or denied. I will not make that decision until I've heard everyone's testimony and have reviewed the public file and considered the relevant laws or rules in the case, all right? So that's what I saw on the site view. Let me tell you a couple more things about what I know. I reviewed the staff report, which I believe is dated July 7th, 2020. I am familiar with staff believes to be, and I'm going to use a couple of words here that are going to be very important to you. I observed what the staff believes to be the relevant approval criteria and what staff believes to be the relevant evidence as of the date the staff report was issued. You, if you haven't already seen the staff report, may access the staff report by going to the city of Bend website and then open ePlans. And when ePlans does open, search for the case number that I've given you, which is PZ, at least one of them, PZ 20-0179. Once you're in there, then there's all kinds of documents. One of those documents is the staff report. The other thing that I reviewed, because Ms. Kennedy has been very helpful in making sure that I was aware that there was a number of comments received by neighborhood interested people, is I've reviewed in a cursory manner, many of the submitted comments. In fact, I think, as I noted this morning, when I was looking at it again, there were 72 comments. So it's quite a few. And so I've looked at those in a cursory. I have not memorized those. I have not studied them to every depth. But I am familiar with those. If you're going to testify today and you also submitted written comments, then I'd ask you to make reference to those comments because, as you may notice in the background noise, I take computer notes of these hearings and I take quite complete computer notes. And if I haven't taken a note on something, then I will actually go back and listen to the recording. So I want you to tell me if, in fact, you have a comment submitted and reference those. And that's helpful. So that's what I know. This is the second time that everyone is given an open opportunity. It's kind of like the open mic event at your local establishment. But I'm going to give everyone a chance in just a sec to comment. And that's after I make the following statement. I believe that I have no bias, no prejudice or personal interest in this case that would affect the objective, me making an objective decision in the case. I believe I am qualified to preside over this hearing and render an unbiased and objective decision. So, Mr. Olmeda, take a check. Everybody else that's in the audience, would you please? If you disagree, if you say that I should not hear this case, if you do not want me to hear this case, I need you to raise your hand or if you're on telephone, hit the star three. Let me know right now because I need to respond to that.
We have one caller who's raised their hand, Mr. Frank, and it's 541-306. I'm unmuting you right now. You will hear two beeps. Please provide your comment.
Hello, my name's Doug Griffin. I live at 3162 Northeast Nathan. So I listened to what you had to say. So why are you the one person that will make a decision on this? Why is this not a panel of some type? Why is it just up to you?
Okay, thank you, sir. Good question, actually. You know, I think in all the time I've been doing this, nobody's ever actually asked me that. But I will tell you, the answer is actually quite simple is this is a, my, the hearings officer process is used by the city of Bend as a result of its ordinances and its code and primarily Bend City Code. If you look at Bend City Code 4.1800, and I'm just giving you that 4.1800, it talks about the hearing process and a quasi judicial hearing process. And I'm not going to go into that in any great detail, the response to you. Mr. Griffin is, I'm authorized by the city code, city staff, planning staff have, they have a series of, I believe, three or four hearings officers that do hearings for them. And by the luck of the draw, and I believe that's what it is, I was selected to be the hearings officer in this particular case. So any other objections or concerns about my hearing this case today?
I am.
Mr. Olmeda.
There's one more, I believe. Did you raise your hand again, sir? Well, hit 541-306, okay.
And is this binding your decision? Or can we take this to court if we don't agree with your decision?
Thank you for the question. Ms. Kennedy, you want to respond to that?
Can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
This is Heidi Kennedy, staff planner for the city of Bend. In, as referenced earlier, the procedures ordinance does allow multiple levels of appeals at different stages. There's city council potential appeals and also there's a state land use board of appeals process. So that chapter 4.1 talks about the steps for appealing, the details about how to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Mr. Griffin, the short answer that I would give is yes, there is a right of appeal of my decision. Any other questions or concerns about my hearing the case?
I do not see any more.
All right, thank you. Let me proceed then, and I think I'm going to exceed my seven to nine minutes and I apologize for that. Let me talk to you about the hearing process. I assure you that everyone who wishes to speak today will be given at least one opportunity to speak. There's a couple of people get to speak twice, once again, and I'm anticipating the question because I think Mr. Griffin has asked really good questions. But I'm anticipating what he might be asking, and that is that how come some people get to speak once and some people get to speak more than once? Once again, it goes back to the code, which I referenced before, which is the Bend City Code 4.1.800. And it's actually in that section. But there are, if you listen, you will find out whether you're the one or the opportunity to speak more than one time. Most people just get to speak one time. So everyone gets to speak at least one time. I'm not going to put time limits on the hearing today and your testimony. But as a matter of courtesy, I'm going to mention a couple of things. Number one is I would have appreciated it if you would limit your testimony to five minutes, but it's not a limit. And that is simply because most of us can get to what we need to get to in the five minutes. Or if you need to be more specific, I will talk about the record in this case being remained, remained open. And during that period of time, you can submit even more precise and well thought out statements as a result of what you want to convey to me. So I'm not putting time limits, but I'd request that you keep it within five minutes. Secondly, is with respect to the time limit, is if you speak after someone else has said something that you agree with, the best way to deal with that is simply say, I agree with so and so who has spoken before me. The reason that I ask that is number one is that all of us have things, especially you, have things that you'd like to do with the rest of your day. But secondly, is saying something twice or three times or four times doesn't make whatever you said either more true or less true. Yeah, I take really good notes and if somebody said something, I wrote it down. And I don't need to write it down over and over. And just simply because somebody said something more than one time does not make it more or less true. So those two comments relate to time limits. Here's the order of testimony. Following my opening comments, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Kennedy, who will give the staff presentation. Following Ms. Kennedy, the applicant will be given an opportunity to speak. That is either going to be the applicant or the applicant's representative. Following the applicant's comments, then any of the persons who are in favor of the application will be given an opportunity to speak. City of Bend has a bit of an unusual approach to things. And they say next in line is neutral testimony. I don't know exactly what neutral testimony is. But if you want to testify and you haven't already testified, then feel comfortable testifying there. The next group that people can speak in is the opposition testimony. And having read the comments, there is a serious number of folks that are opposed to this. And this would be the time for those folks to testify. If you haven't already testified in favor, neutral, or in opposition and still want to tell me something, then testify during the opposition testimony. I'll be able to distinguish, I hope, which side you're on and the point that you're wishing to make. Now, everyone has gotten to speak one time so far. At this point in time, I'm going to ask, I would ask that the applicant or excuse me, the staff, and this is a little bit different than what's in the code, but the staff give their final comments. And then finally, the applicant will be given an opportunity for rebuttal. I'm sure there's somebody in here saying, how come the applicant gets to speak twice? Does that give them an advantage? And it may be true that that could be considered advantage, but the applicant has, under the Bend City Code, the obligation to demonstrate by evidence in the record that each and every one of the relevant approval criteria, and I just used those three, and I'll talk in a sec. The applicant has the burden to show that each and every one of the relevant approval criteria have been met. The state of Oregon, under Oregon state statutes, says that because the applicant has that burden of proof, they get a final rebuttal. So the applicant gets to speak twice. Everyone else speaks once. Even though that I've tried to ask you not to speak more than five minutes and not be repetitive, if you have something to say, I'm not going to cut you off at five minutes because I know you only get to speak once. And I want to make sure that you use that opportunity effectively. So before you sign off, and that's the way I look at it in these hearings, before you sign off, do yourself a favor, take a couple of deep breaths and say, have I covered everything that I really want to cover? All right. So that's the order of the presentation. Let me talk about those three words, relevant approval criteria. Because those of you who do not do land use cases on a regular basis, those three words in the land use field are incredibly important, okay? And to me, they're important in what decisions that I make in this particular case. The phrase relevant approval criteria in a land use hearing means, for those of you who are used to other things, it means rules or laws that apply to this case. So if I say relevant approval criteria, those are the laws or rules that apply in this case. All right? You may, if you've reviewed the staff report, you certainly may say the staff has selected what are the correct relevant approval criteria. You may say that the staff has included too many approval criteria. Or you may say the staff didn't include enough. There should be more relevant approval criteria. You must tell me at the hearing if you believe the staff included too many or not enough approval criteria, or whether or not the staff correctly interpreted the approval criteria, rephrase, the staff interpreted the relevant laws or rules. You must do so, and this is land use law stuff, but you must do so through your testimony or the evidence that you provide. You must provide me with sufficient specificity. And that's not easy to say, but that's the term. Sufficient specificity to allow me and other participants in this hearing the ability to address your specific concerns. Okay? As I indicated, the burden of proof is on the applicant. I'm going to, and I apologize for this part, but I can't figure out a way to put it in my own terms. So I read this from the Benson Code. There's four sections. One is from 4.187085C. It says, "The failure to raise and issued accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the hearings body and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to the land use board of appeals based on that issue." Restated, and that's the end of the quote, restated, that simply means you've got to be clear. So I'm capable and everyone else is capable of figuring out what you're talking about and which relevant approval law, criteria or law or rule you were talking about. Secondly, 4.187086, "The failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court," end of quote. Next one, 4.1870A7 says, "An issue which may be the basis for an appeal to the land use board of appeals shall be raised no later than the close of the record at the following, the final evidentiary hearing on the proposal." You must raise it prior to the final evidentiary hearing of the proposal before the local government. "Such issues shall be raised and accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the city council planning commissioner, hearings body, or hearings officer and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue." Finally, "Any objection not raised prior to the close of oral testimony is waived. All parties alleging procedural defects shall have the burden of proof at Luba as to whether or not the error occurred and whether the error has prejudiced the party's substantial rights." And I'm sorry I had to read those, but those are very technical. And in my summary, it simply means you need to bring up with clarity what your issue is. And then pretty much you need to be able to tell me what the relevant laws or rules are that your evidence relates to. In other words, the relevant approval criteria. My final comments are going to relate to the closing of the record. Under the Bend City Code, a continuance of the hearing is maybe requested. A continuance may be requested. And if you, if that is, that request is made, that means that you want to come back and have another hearing. In other words, we set up another date and do another complete hearing at this level. So if you want to continue hearing, please say, I want to continue to hear. I have discretion under the Bend City Code to deny a request for a continuance. The second thing about the closing of the record is called open record. And that means that any party may request during their testimony, presentation, or in writing, that the record remain open for the submission of additional written evidence. So I need you to do that today. So if you want the record to remain open, to submit new documents into the record after the close of the hearing today, you need to make that request. I'm pretty good at figuring out when people make that request. You don't have to say. You don't have to say, I want the record remain open under the code. You don't have to say that, just say, I don't want the record to close today. And if somebody asks me that, just one person asked me that, then I will tell you that at the end of the hearing, we'll talk about how long the record will remain open. I will tell you that I'm obligated under state law to keep the record open for not less than seven days, but to submit new written evidence and at least an additional seven days for the applicant to provide final rebuttal. If somebody asks for the record to remain open, uh, at the end of the hearing, that's when we talk about the logistics, the how to get information into the record in a timely manner. If you have something pressing and you have to get out of this process before we've completed the hearing today, you need to talk to somebody that heard the hearing, you need to talk to Ms. Kennedy, or you may, you need to go back and listen to the recording because uh, we talk about the logistics at the end of the hearing, not before the end of the hearing. So please do that. Under the um, Ben City Code, or my contract, excuse me, I'm required to deliver a decision on my case within twenty one days of the close of the record. I don't know when the record's going to close. If nobody asks for the record to remain open today, it will close today and within twenty one days, I will issue my decision. If somebody does ask for the record to remain open today, then I'm obligated to keep it the record open and my decision will be due twenty one days from that date. So I'm done. Uh, I will be pretty quiet for the most of the time, other than calling on people. Uh, please recall that prior to your testimony, please give your name and address. At this point in time, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Kennedy. She will give the staff presentation. Following the staff presentation, uh, I'd expect the applicant or applicant's representative to be prepared to to give their presentation. Uh, so with that, Ms. Kennedy, it's your turn.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. For the record, my name is Heidi Kennedy, I'm the staff planner for these three applications. PZ twenty dash zero one seven nine, which is a wireless communication facility site plan for a sixty foot tall cell tower, camouflage to look like a pine tree and a twenty by twenty foot fenced equipment area for emergency generator at the base of the tower. The second application is PZ nine dash zero one eighty, a conditional use permit application for a sixty foot tall monopine wireless communication tower that exceeds the maximum height limit of the commercial convenience zone, which the maximum height limit is thirty five feet. And the third application is PZ twenty dash one eighty one, site plan alteration application to alter an existing developed commercial property to accommodate this facility. And the location for this project is twenty six twenty five Northeast Butler Market Road. Um, and on page two of the staff report that was uploaded a week ago um, into the E-Plans files, uh, the applicable criteria and standards and procedures that staff found were applied to this application request include the Ben Development Code, Chapter three point seven Wireless and Broadcast Communication Facilities, Chapter four point two MDS, which is Minimum Development Standards Review, Site Plan Review and Design Review. Chapter four point four Conditional Use Permits. Standards um, include Chapter two point two Commercial Zoning Districts, Chapter three point one Lot Parcel Block Design and Access and Circulation, um, Chapter three point two Landscape, Tree Trees and Fencing and Walls, um, Chapter. Chapter three point three is the Vehicle Parking and Loading and Bicycle Parking Chapter. Chapter three point four is the Public Improvement Standards Chapter and three point five, the Other Design Standards Chapter. The procedures used when setting up this meeting, um, public hearing and and processing this application um, include the Procedures Chapter four point one Development Review and Procedures. Um, upon reviewing those criteria standards in the in the procedures that are outlined in the Development Code, staff um, listed the recommendation, the hearings officer recommendation on page, starting on page twenty one of the staff report, which staff recommendation is that the hearings officer find that all the applicable criteria have been met with the exception of the potential negative visual impacts due to fading from the monopole branches over time. Staff recommends the applicant be required to provide a detailed maintenance plan that will ensure the proposed new monopine will not reach a state of disrepair evidenced by monopine, by the monopine located at three hundred northeast Bend River Mall Avenue. Staff recommends that the long-term maintenance plan identify a specific date or an age that all of the tower branches will be replaced. As evidenced by weather conditions experienced in Ben, fading appears to happen between years five and six, based on the one example I referenced earlier. In the event, the applicant is able to provide a detailed maintenance plan to ensure the monopine will not reach a state of disrepair over time. Staff recommends the following conditions of approval. The recommended conditions of approval um, include one, which is a standard condition which says that the decision is based on all of the materials that have been submitted. Um, any substantial alteration of the approved plans other than those that may be required to comply with conditions of approval will require a new application. Number two, prior to the Planning Division's final inspection of the proposed monopine cell tower, the applicant submit photos to the satisfaction of the city sufficient to prove that the facility is in substantial conformance with the photo simulations provided by the application. Nonconformance shall require modification to compliance within ninety days or the structure must be removed. And the third recommended condition is a final site plan be submitted to the Community Development Department. The final site plan shall depict the proposal as approved and shall incorporate all the conditions of approval contained in the decision. And no billing or engineering permits be issued until the final site plan is approved. And that's all I have at this point. Thank you very much.
Alright, um, I do have two questions, uh, and they're not uh, well, they're asked because I believe that I've done cell tower cases a couple before. And the issues always come up and I just want to make sure that that those who are testifying have an opportunity to to um, respond to what are the relevant approval or criteria. And and I was, as I indicated earlier, I was reviewing a number of the opposition uh, comments this morning and two issues which are not unusual for cell tower cases uh, came up. One is value reduction uh, of a property as a result of approval of a cell tower. And secondly, our health-related issues uh, by the, by having a resonance in proximity to um, a cell tower. Ms. Kennedy, uh, Ms. Kennedy, if you could, uh, if you're able, uh, respond to those two issues so that that folks in the um, audience have an understanding at least what staff believes uh, are the answers to those two issues.
Um. Uh, the first one is addressing property values.
Yes.
And um, there are no standards or criteria in the Ben Development Code directly related to property values um, with regards to any applications for cell tower facilities. And um, that would be the answer I would have for the first question and then um.
Health impacts?
Health impacts. The Chapter three point seven, which um, hold on one second, let me pull up my notes. Includes um, criteria and standards that are based on federal law and it preempts the City of Ben from addressing health impacts provided that the so applicant is able to meet all of the minimum standards and um, requirements that the federal laws have put in place for them. And that's what I have to say for the second one, as far as feedback.
I appreciate that. Alright, uh, that's all the questions I have. Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. This would be the time and place for the applicant or applicant's representative. Uh, Juan, if you want to let me know who's up?
I'm sorry, I believe we have Tommy Hamilton and Mike Connors.
Okay, we should go first. Mr. Connors, I recognize you.
Thank you, Mr. Frank. Uh, for the record, Mike Connors, uh, with Hathaway Larson. Address is one three three one Northwest Lovejoy, suite nine fifty Portland, Oregon nine seven two zero nine. Uh, also on the line is Tammy Hamilton with ACOM Consulting. Uh, Tammy is the person who put together the application material and has been uh, uh, working on the application. And then uh, also on the line is Colleen DeChaser, who is a Verizon representative. Um, for simplicity, I'm going to handle the presentation on our side. But to the extent that you have any questions, Tammy or Colleen are available to answer those as well. Um, so uh, real quickly, uh, what you have in front of you is a proposal for a sixty foot monopine stealth facility, uh, which is designed to look like a pine tree. Under the uh, City of Ben Code, it's defined as a moderate visibility uh, facility uh, because the uh, monopine is a stealth design that is intended to camouflage and minimize the visual impact of the facility. The actual tower itself is fifty feet with an antenna tip, uh, height of forty nine feet. The reason for the additional ten feet is uh, to put a top on the tree. So it looks like a real tree as opposed to a tree with the top chopped off. So in actuality, the uh, specific height that we need for this particular tower is forty nine feet. Uh, but the additional ten feet is for the top on the monopine. Um, we'll have six antennas on the facility. These are all three G, four G antennas, no five G antennas. And I only mentioned that because I saw some comments with respect to five G. Uh, and then some ground equipment, uh, which will be in a twenty by twenty foot area, um, surrounded by retaining wall and gate. Um, as you know, uh, from your site visit, uh, the property is uh, commercially zoned. It's commercial convenience zone and there are existing uh, commercial uses there, gas station, dentist and coffee kiosk. And um, in the zone, moderate uh, visibility facilities like the stealth facility are permitted outright, but the reason that we have a conditional use application is that any uh, tower that exceeds the base height of the zone is required to go through conditional use. Base height uh, is thirty five feet. Uh, and as I indicated, the tower here is uh, you know, fifty feet with the additional ten feet uh, to make it look like a tree. Uh, and the reason for that is, as uh, RF engineer indicated, is that forty nine foot antenna height limit is the minimum height necessary to achieve the objectives of uh, this site. And uh, the specific site will be in the southeast corner of the property. Uh, where if you may have seen from your site visit, there's a number of existing trees and mature vegetation. And the purpose for putting it there is to uh, help it blend in more, uh, being a monopine. Uh, it uh, it blends in and is more of a camouflage when it's surrounded by other trees and vegetation. The particular need for this tower is uh, what uh, the industry calls a capacity tower. Um, there's coverage needs and capacity needs. Coverage needs are are needs that people are more familiar with, where you have certain areas where there may be a weak signal and uh, a difficulty uh, getting a signal there. Capacity refers to the overall capability of the existing facilities to accommodate uh, the traffic, uh, the data traffic. Um, and in this case, we have a uh, pretty significant capacity deficiency uh, in this particular area. And um, when you overload the existing system, it has very similar impacts on users as a lack of coverage would in that you get uh, busy calls, oh, excuse me, busy signals, drop calls uh, and slow data time. And we provided a couple of different things from our RF engineers, a RF justification um, packet as well as a density map, which uh, discusses the need to offload the existing facilities. There are three facilities in the surrounding area, which we uh, um, identify as High Desert, Cambian Hospital. And those systems are currently overloaded, so there's a need for a um, a new tower here. And it's important to understand that that's today's uh, existing conditions. Uh, it's only going to get worse in the future, uh, because as Ben continues to grow, there'll be more users. Uh, and also, uh, there's uh, you know, uh, and and most of us are gravitating more towards uh, use of our cell phones as our primary or exclusive phone. So from a nine one one emergency health perspective, uh, you know, oftentimes people, that's their only way to call nine one one and need to make sure that uh, they're not in a position where we've got uh, inability to accommodate those calls. And also, I think more recently with the COVID nineteen situation, you have more people who are working from home or spending more at home, uh, time at home than is typically the case. Um, and so there's a growing need there as well to make sure that we can accommodate all the traffic. Um, in terms of the process for uh, locating this particular site, that this has been a uh, a, 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 a project that's been in the works for for several years uh, to try to find a site uh, to accommodate the, this particular tower. Um, and per the Ben Code, uh, we did look at the uh, various alternatives. Some of which, quite frankly, are easier, uh, you know, from a timing and cost perspective for Verizon to co-locate on a facility because uh, the uh, time and expense it takes to locate a new facility and go through these uh, public hearings, uh, make it a more difficult option. Uh, but unfortunately, we don't have uh, any co-location uh, options that can accommodate the capacity need here. Uh, there is an existing tower that's uh, one point three two miles away from the subject site, uh, which is too far to the north and is actually too far to one of the existing towers that we're trying to offload. And one of the difficulties you have when you're uh, looking to offload a tower is it needs to be in the right location. It can't be too far, otherwise the signal uh, can't transfer. And if it's too close, you'll get signorant, signal interference. And that particular existing tower uh, is too close to uh, some of the other Verizon towers and would create some interference. Uh, we did evaluate existing structures in the area and none of them are tall enough to uh, accommodate the uh, the height that we need here. And utility poles similarly, uh, they're, they're not tall enough. Uh, there are structural issues and then we still need uh, the ability to locate uh, ground equipment. And there's not uh, any options available to do that with utility poles. Um, alternative sites, uh, we evaluated uh, different alternative sites and the standard under the code is to find and uh, you know, evaluate an alternative site that is capable of meeting the same service objectives and is uh, will provide a equal or lesser visual impact. Um, and there just aren't any sites uh, that can accommodate our uh, capacity service objective here that are not zoned on, uh, that are not zone residential. Um, this is really the only commercial zone property in the area. The the Ben Code, uh, there's a preference towards um, uh, looking for um, non-residential type properties. And this is really the only one. Uh, we did evaluate uh, the Mountain View High School property um, because that's where uh, a large portion of the data traffic is and part of what we're trying to accommodate here. Uh, but the uh, facilities manager at the school, you know, evaluated that issue and determined that the school is not interested in leasing any property. We also, based on some comments, uh, took a look at the Forest Service and Pine Nursery Property. Uh, but as you'll see in our um, data map from RF engineer, those properties are too far to the north. And really what we need for this site is to be in closer proximity to the high school because that's the area where there's the heavier traffic. Um, and so based on looking at all the available properties, the uh, proposed site, we believe is uh, the best site and will provide the the least visual impacts in that it's um, it's, you know, commercially zoned. Uh, it's got mature landscape, so the monopine is capable of blending in better with the surrounding area. Uh, we have a willing uh, landlord that's willing to lease property to us and And that's something that oftentimes people overlook. Not everybody wants to allow a wireless tower on their property. And in this case, we have a property that is willing. And also, it's large enough to meet the setback requirements. You know, we understand that there are surrounding residential areas and per the code, we're required to meet the setback to be equal to or greater than the height of the tower, which we're able to do here. Most of the other properties that would be available in order to meet our objective for this site would be residentially zoned, and it wouldn't be possible for us to meet the setback requirements. In terms of the approval criteria, I'm not going to go through all of them, because I think that will take too long. But hopefully, you've had an opportunity to read through the application narrative, as well as the staff report. And I think both did a good job of addressing and explaining why our proposal meets the approval criteria. Just a couple of things to note. As I indicated earlier, this is a permitted use in this particular zone. The only reason that we're doing a conditional use is because we exceed the 35-foot height limit. And Mr. Frank, I know you've dealt with some of these wireless tower applications. And as you probably know from your experience, it's very unusual to find a tower that's 35 feet or lower. And so, it's part of the reason why we're needing the additional height and having to go through the conditional use process. We meet all the technical and objective standards, you know, setback, parking, landscape, lighting, noise, et cetera. And I think those are addressed in the application, as well as the alternative sites or co-location criteria. And I won't repeat that. I just addressed that a bit ago. In terms of visual impacts, I think it's important to emphasize that what the code requires is not that we avoid or eliminate any visual impact. It's that we mitigate, that we mitigate to the extent reasonable or practicable. And so, I think that's an important standard, you know, to highlight here, because, you know, again, we understand that the facility will be visible to the surrounding area. It's not possible, under current technology, to avoid any visual impact. But we believe in this case that we have mitigated the visual impacts of surrounding area to the greatest extent practicable, which is the code standard, in that, you know, the tower is the minimum height necessary for our objective. It's a monopine stealth. And in this particular area, it's an ideal candidate for a monopine stealth because of the surrounding trees and mature vegetation, which will help it blend in better. There's also some screening that will be provided by the existing buildings on the site, at least around the lower end base of it. And it's a commercial zone property with existing commercial uses. So, that already has some impact on some of the residents, and this is more commercial in nature. I do want to address the staff recommendation for the maintenance plan. And just note a couple of things and then propose what we think would be the condition that you should adopt to address it. First of all, staff concerns, which we understand, and certainly seem reasonable, are based on a existing tower at Bend River Mall Road. The important thing to understand is that although Verizon is, has antennas on that tower, that is not a Verizon-owned tower. That is a Crown Castle-owned tower. And it's a different tower than the tower that we're proposing here. It's a different manufacturer. And so, and it's also 10 years old. And so, while we understand, you know, staff's concerns about some of the fading on that facility and the need to make sure that that doesn't happen here, I think it's important to note that's not what, the type of tower and manufacturer that we're going to be using. And to the extent that there is any fading, that's really a Crown Castle issue, not Verizon. When Verizon owns the tower, which they will in this case, then we have sole control on our ability to manage that tower. And as you can appreciate, given how many towers and facilities that we need to be able to accommodate all our customers, we have a strong incentive to make sure that we're maintaining a good product, and the city views that as well, as that would affect future proposals. In our application, and also appears in the staff report, we provided an example of a tower in Vail, Colorado. Same manufacturer, same kind of tower that we're going to use here. That tower is 6 to 7 years old. As you can see, it's in much better condition than the tower on Bend River Drive. With that being said, we did check with the manufacturer to get some additional information about what they recommend in terms of timing of when to do the kind of maintenance. And they didn't have any specific timeframe in which they made that recommendation. And looking at some of our existing facilities, you know, the ones that are in Bend, the same environment, you know, the oldest one we have, I believe, is 2 to 3 years old. So, we don't have a good example of when this type of tower is going to need replacement branches or some additional coloration to avoid the fading. And so, we believe the condition that you should impose that Verizon is offering is that we will agree to do a biannual inspection of the tower, meaning twice per year, every 6 months. Inspect the tower to ensure that the branches, antenna, antenna socks, the coloring is still sufficient. And if not, we'll make the necessary upgrades or repairs to ensure that it is well-maintained. And the reason that we believe that this approach is better than what staff had suggested and into, you know, in staff's defense, I think they were partially saying, "We're not really sure either" what the timeframe is. But looking at that Bend Mall example, or looking at 5 to 6 years, we think rather than picking an arbitrary timeframe, and again, because we don't have any basis to know whether 5, 6 years or any other timeframe is the right timeframe, we think our approach is better, you know, twice per year to do those inspections. And the reason for that is, rather than having sort of an arbitrary timeframe where we may be required to do replacements when it's unnecessary, or we may be allowed to delay doing any kind of upgrades or replacements when it is necessary, because it fades faster than we thought. This condition will ensure that we're regularly maintaining it. And because it's a condition of approval, provide the city some enforcement mechanism, so that if the city feels that the tower is not being sufficiently maintained, they can rely on that condition to say that we're required to comply with that condition and do the maintenance. So, that's our proposal on addressing the maintenance issue. And then, real quickly, I'm just going to go over some of the highlight comments that I saw from the public, two of which you noted, and give you our perspective on those issues. First one on property values. There were, you know, a fair number of comments about property values. And as was indicated, the City of Bend code doesn't have a code provision in which production and property values is a relevant criteria. And there's some specific case law that relates to wireless towers. And one of the key cases is Hill versus City of Portland, 66 Oregon Luba 250. And what that case stands for, the proposition, is that in particular with wireless towers, the absence of a code provision or approval criteria that requires consideration of property values precludes the jurisdiction from considering it. You know, any city or county can adopt this part of the code, but if they haven't, then it's not relevant to the decision. And then, there's also some case law, Luba case law, that even if it is relevant, the evidence needs to be specific to the site, not sort of general evidence of general impacts of wireless towers. And I don't think we have any specific evidence here. Second issue that you asked about, Mr. Frank, was the health effects. And I think, you know, as Heidi indicated, it's, you know, not relevant under the criteria. And also, it's preempted by the Federal Telecommunications Act. And I know sometimes people get frustrated with that, with that answer. But the reason for that is that, you know, health impacts a very complicated type of issue and which was dealt with at the federal level after, you know, extensive process where all parties were able to introduce evidence with the idea that we need to have a national standard, because otherwise wireless carriers would not be able to have a single standard that they could use and would be subject to each jurisdiction's individual standard. And each jurisdiction, with someone like you as an earnings officer, trying to make a very, you know, complicated decision with high degree of science and technology that you may not have the background for. But bottom line there is that federal law precludes a local jurisdiction from considering the health impacts, so long as we can demonstrate that we comply with the FCC emission standards. We provided a report by Andrew Thatcher that addresses that issue. And the conclusion of his report is, is that this facility will be at 7% of the public exposure limit. So, it's way below the federal limit that's established by the FCC. Saw some comments related to the tower's proximity to a residential zone and school. As we indicated, really, in terms of our ability to meet our objectives for the site, there were no other sites other than residentially zoned sites. And the Bend zoning development code doesn't preclude citing one of these towers adjacent to residential properties. What it does do is it requires that we, as I indicated earlier, meet the setback equal to or greater than the height of the tower from any adjacent residential properties, which we've done here. Setbacks of 70 feet with a tower that's 60 feet. And so, you know, again, we comply with the code. There's nothing that precludes us from citing it on this site, not standing in proximity to those uses. Visibly aesthetics came up. I think I addressed that before in terms of the standard being to mitigate or minimize the impacts, which we believe we've done with the minimum height stealth design in a site that will help blend in better and provide additional screening. And so, with that, those are the major points that I saw from the public comments. But again, if you look through both the, the application narrative, as well as the staff report, we've touched all of the approval criteria. We believe we comply and request that you approve the application, subject to staff's recommended conditions of approval, with the one variation of the maintenance plan being a requirement that we do a biannual inspection of the tower and do appropriate maintenance to address any broken branches, fading, et cetera. And with that, that concludes my comments, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I have no questions at this time. I may have them during your opportunity for rebuttal. I thank you. Is there someone else you wish to have speak on behalf of the applicant?
Yeah, I guess I'll just ask whether Tammy and Colleen, is there anything that you want to add to our testimony?
This is Colleen DeShazer. I do not have anything to add at this time.
This is Tammy Hamilton as well. I have nothing to add as well at this time.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Frank. That concludes our initial presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Connors. Is there anyone in the audience who wish to speak in support of, in favor of the application? Ms. Almeida, anybody hand up?
No, sir, not at this time.
Is there anybody who'd like to speak in the neutral part of the testimony?
We do have one person at this time, 541318. I am going to go ahead and unmute you. You'll hear two beeps. Please proceed.
If you'll identify yourself for the record, please.
Yes, this is Carol Elwood. I live at 1917 Northeast Higher Ground Avenue in Bend. I am the Land Use Chair for Mountain View Neighborhood Association, in which this project resides, and...
Carol, could you do me a favor and spell your last name, because I didn't get it. It's my fault.
Carol Elwood, E-L-W-O-O-D.
Thank you. Go ahead.
My comments are relevant to the public meeting section of the code 4.1.215. The meeting on January 7th, I was notified that there would be a public meeting, and it really surprised me that it was what I would call a open house format. There was a greeter. I did sign in, but the greeter misrepresented the height of the project. She said it was a 50-foot tower, and I pointed out that the notification I had called it a 60-foot monopine. And she had to go ask someone. She gave her first name as Sandy, by the way. I didn't know her affiliation or her last name. And by the way, a lot of these comments, I did correspond with Heidi Kennedy after the meeting, so let her know. I thought this was an irregular meeting. So, I did sign in. There were three stations with information. There was no single presentation for the group. I see that the code does call out a presentation at a public meeting. And I think that was very loosely meet that definition, but it was really not a presentation in front of the whole group. There was, like I said, these three stations, and we were welcome to converse with these three people representing different aspects of the project. We were always able to ask them to tell us what they wanted us to know. We could ask them any questions we had for clarification, but it was not done in an open format where everyone could hear the same information at the same time. So, I'd say, because of people coming and going at each of the stations, it was unclear whether I was hearing the entirety of someone's presentation. In the E-Plans, I did see that there was two documents, verification of public and neighborhood association meeting and applicant's verification of compliance with City of Bend Development Code. These are documents that I normally, at a pre-application meeting, will have presented to me to sign off on. I did not, I asked at each of these three locations if they had paperwork they wanted me to sign, and they were innocent. They did not know what I was talking about, or they did not have it. So, in the E-Plans, now I see the forms are there. My signature is not on it. They did note that I was in attendance, but that I did not sign, and that I objected to the format of the meeting. So, I did, that's factual. I did tell them that I did not understand this to meet the norms of a public meeting. But the forms were not given to me to sign. They were not, they were not available during the meeting that I was there. I think there's a bigger value if it's a single, large presentation, so everyone hears the same information. If people ask questions, everyone in attendance can hear the same questions and can hear what the answers are, and it may refine their thinking so that they can ask a better follow-up question. None of that was available at this meeting. I'm neither, as a representative of Mountain View Neighborhood, I'm neither in favor or in opposition to the project. But I just wanted it to be on the record that I found their public meetings to be questionable.
Anything else, Ms. Elwood?
I believe that's the entirety of what I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Just for your information, Ms. Elwood, I reviewed a document provided by the consulting firm dated December 9th, 2019. The reason that I mentioned that is it has attached those, I believe, the two forms that you were talking about, as well as an attendance roster. I do have, and I'm going to give you one additional opportunity to respond on this, I do have in front of me Bend City Code 4.1.215, which is the public meeting requirement. And if there's anything with respect to that particular section of the code that you'd like me to take notice of, I'm going to give you an opportunity to talk about that right now.
Am I on now?
Go ahead, please.
What I highlighted in that part of the code is the presentation... What I highlighted in that part of the code is the presentation. The presentation at the public meeting must include the following. So I just am questioning whether there actually was a presentation. Um, also, there's an op, um, section six, an opportunity for the public to provide comments. And that was actually, that did occur, but it wasn't in response to a unified presentation.
I appreciate the, the testimony and the clarification on your part. Anything else, ma'am?
No, thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Um, anyone else wishing to testify in the neutral section of, of this uh, hearing?
Yes, Mr. Greg, we have uh, Colin user with area code seven oh two, prefix five nine five. You'll hear two beeps after I unmute your microphone. Please proceed.
First name, last name. If, if you think I could misspell your last name, make sure you spell it and your address, please.
I apologize. I hit the, I hit the button at the wrong time.
Okay, you want to wait?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, my guess is that there's probably, let's just keep you on the line, okay? Uh, my guess is there's probably not another neutral person, but there may be a couple uh, in opposition. I'm assuming you're in the opposition uh, section of the testimony?
One, one second, Mr. Greg. Yeah, I'm, the participant lower their hand.
Let's put it back on.
Here we go. You are unmuted now. Go ahead, please.
Are we in opposition? I apologize.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna take you right now since you got started. So first name, last name.
Sure, it's uh, Jeff Rhodes, uh, R H O, D as in David, E S.
Address, please.
Twenty-eight sixty Northeast Maria Drive, Bend, Oregon.
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I'm in uh, opposition of the cell tower. Uh, and I want to start by saying I really appreciate all the amount of details. Not only from Miss Kennedy putting together her staff report, but also the narrative that the team put together on the Thornhill project. Um, I just wanted to start it by, by stating Ben Development Code three point seven three. Uh, says except for type one applications, the applicant must include analysis of alternative site facility within the inside, outside of the city, and they're capable of meeting the same service objectives as a preferred site with equivalent or lesser visual impact. If a new tower is proposed, the applicant must demonstrate the need for a new tower and why the alternative locations cannot be used to meet the identified service objectives. So I just had three comments regarding that Ben code. The first one being the alternative site analysis. Um, on page ten of the staff report, it states, a new offload site is needed as per the applicant's analysis. Uh, the proposed location needs to be close to Mountain View High School as possible. Then said demand is coming from the high school. Now, listen, I understand there is a demand coming from that high school. Probably fifteen hundred cell phones that show up during that day out there, but my question comes back to the Thornhill density map that got submitted. It was shown over a four-day period in February of twenty twenty, which we know is pre-COVID times, but they didn't state the time. They didn't state the, the date that it was going in there. So my question to them would be, well, I mean, if there is a huge use from the hours of eight and two or eight and three, well, of course it's going to be because there's so many students going to the high school during that time. What about the other times? Does a cell tower required, let's say on a Saturday morning, on a Sunday afternoon, or, or during the week after three o'clock, does it require the use of a cell tower to manage all that flow out there? Their, the report, the density map they provided didn't list any time dates. So it's hard for us to, as a community, to understand, do we really even need this cell tower? They're telling us they need it, but it may be for future projects that are going in the future out there, but from the current situation that we're standing in now, is this cell tower even relevant and why is it being placed in such a densely populated area? Um, also regarding that, the alternative site analysis, again, on page ten of the staff report, it talks about, hey, needing it for the, for the high school out there. What were the other locations that were potentially looked at? I'm concerned that this was a commercial space that fit the, that fit the requirements that they needed to. They got approval from the person that owns the lot and they just went with that option, did not really look at anything else. They very briefly mentioned in their reports out there in their Thornhill narrative that, yeah, we looked at the church. It wasn't of interest out there. And then he mentioned on the call, Mr. Connors mentioned on the call that they talked in the high school, but that wasn't of interest. But there's several other locations that we potentially could have looked at or could have been looked at, but maybe didn't get reviewed because they already found somebody. But without providing us with a true alternative site analysis, outlining all the potential other venues, why they weren't used, I'm interested to know what other potential venues are there. We do have a very large park in Pine Nursery with, with lots of open space out there. I'm sure something could have been facilitated there. There's a Forest Service Department. They have a boneyard where they store facilities. They have things that have four hundred square feet of space potentially get used. Again, I don't own those lots. I don't know the story behind that. But without having that outlined in detail, why these other venues aren't options, I find it hard to believe that this is the only solution is to put this thing within seventy-five feet of residential property. Uh, since you are requesting the use of a conditional use permit or a special use permit to put this thing in, I think we should look at every possible scenario before we decide to put something as a blatant eyesore, as a cell tower in people's backyards. Referring to negative visual impact, I have visited all the other cell towers in the area out there. The one that's uh, next to Big Sky, I've visited several other cell towers, the one that's at the Bend River Mall, a, and these are not conducive with what you'd expect in and around a residential area. Uh, not only are they extremely tall, it's over sixty feet tall or, or sixty feet tall, this one is going to be presented here. Uh, that's going to have a huge radius for everybody in that area to see. I mean, I can see this from my house. I have people that, that live next door to me that it's going to be right in their, literally in their front view from right out their door out there. So to tell me that this isn't going to affect my property value, I mean, that is just an asinine comment. You go out and buy a house, are you going to be purchasing a house right next to a cell tower or are you going to try to find someplace that's away from a cell tower? Obviously, price, location are all things that are going to be brought in there, but why should we be subjected to a giant cell tower in our front yard? We all know that that's not going to have great resale for us. So um, I don't like that from that standpoint out there. But also, images were submitted. Um, I'm looking at the staff report that Heidi Kennedy put together. I'm on page seven. Um, these are showing monopines. Again, this is not the same contractor that is interested in putting the cell tower in um, at the Thornhill resident, but this is a similar cell tower. This is a cell tower that is a monopine that's hidden with these fake branches, which is quite honestly an insult to us because they don't look anything like a, a pine tree. Um, and my question to the, to the consultant would be, you submitted a, a picture of what your tower would look like in your narrative. Um, and it's just clearly a, a cell tower, excuse me, a pine tree that has been photoshopped into the picture. Um, and it's not actually what the cell tower would look like. I would like to see what the actual cell tower would look like uh, that would potentially go in there. So on page twenty-five of the narrative that was submitted for this Thornhill project out there, it's clearly a pine tree that has been photoshopped in there. Looking at the staff report, um, as I scroll down to page eight uh, of twenty-two here, and it, it, it shows the monopine that is a distressed-looking monopine that's currently at the Bend River Mall. Um, and it does have new cell socks or whatever, what do we call these cell tower socks that go over the top of there? So these are green, but everything else around it is dead and decaying. Now, I did visit the cell tower yesterday. It doesn't look as bad as it is in this image, if you will, uh, in person, but it certainly looks like lipstick on a pig, if you ask me. Um, with these green socks put atop something that does not look like a cell tower. So um, this is a blatant eyesore right in the backyard of many residents out here, which will bring down the property values, whether the reports or studies have shown or not. Um, it's just general, uh, you know, it's, it's obvious everybody's in the middle to notice this stuff. So based on the fact that we, we don't have any other information out there, we know this is going to have a negative impact on us. I, I, I truly um, uh, am a proponent of this and, and oppose the, the installation of this uh, Thornhill tower. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anything else you'd like to tell me?
That's it. Thanks.
Right. Anyone else wishing to testify in opposition?
Yes, next we have uh, six oh nine, five five eight. You'll hear two beeps. Please, please proceed.
Uh, good morning. My name is Justin Bronson. Um, my wife and two kids and I live at twenty-six sixty Northeast Jill Court, um, which is directly behind.
Could you spell your last? I'm sorry. Let's, let's, let's both take two breaths and then, because they won't interrupt each other, uh, and then give me your last name spelling, please.
Yeah, it's B R O N S O N.
Makes sense to me.
Okay. So yeah, my, my family and I live in Hunter's Highlands, uh, suburban neighborhood directly behind uh, this commercial property. And I just wanted to call and essentially say that I agree with the gentleman that just called in before. Um, in regards to the proximity of this commercially zoned property to residential area, um, for those who don't live here. Um, the size of the commercial property where this is going, a proposed site, is surrounded on almost every side by neighborhoods. And some of them, I mean, I, I'm thinking of our new neighbor who just bought twenty-six ninety right on the corner of twenty-seventh and Jill Court. This thing would sit right on the other side of their fence in their backyard. As far as the health effects, there have been numerous published impartial, non-biased studies that show long-term health effects of radiation exposure to cell towers. Um, in addition to that, um, the former gentleman's conversation and comments regarding property value and property devaluation, um, I have one study and one group that I'm going to reference specifically um, in regards to my opposition, um, and to kind of resonate with the truth of what he shared regarding property devaluation. Uh, the National Institute for Science, Law and Public Policy uh, found that ninety-four percent of home buyers of those surveyed are less interested and would pay less for a property located near a cell tower or antenna. Um, obviously, that's impartial, unbiased research, but I think if any of us asked ourselves the question, would we do the same? I think it would be a representation of self-interest in this case to say that we wouldn't be bothered by it. In addition to that, there is a published report called The Impact of Cell Phone Towers on House Prices in Residential Neighborhoods. You can actually Google that exact text and you can find that study. And this study found that buyers would pay as much as twenty percent less as determined at the time by an opinion survey in addition to a sales price analysis. So, um, the thorough there was research to come to this conclusion that um, your average home buyer would pay twenty percent less on properties located within um, a thousand-foot uh, proximity to these cell towers. And I just, um, I feel like this conversation, the process leading up to attending decision, um, has essentially cornered, um, a lot of us as home buyers into this feeling of corporate interest versus public interest. And I know myself, um, had I known that this was something on the horizon to put within this community, I would have not bought this home. There's, there's just no question that I would have done it. I would have bought somewhere else. And for those of us who live in Bend, and I know that um, members of the representative party and the applicant, they don't live here and it's different. It's just different when you live somewhere. Uh, the context is different, how things affect you, how decisions affect you are different, and the realities of what's at stake are different as well. Um, those of us who live here, we're in strong opposition to this, and I think that's been proven already. Um, but I agree that, that the city, the applicant, whoever it is, um, you know, that dual responsibility to really provide more thorough analysis regarding alternate um, proposed site developments. That needs to be done because had they audited or considered the community interest in this going in as a part of their report, I don't even think we'd be having this hearing because they know that there's such strong opposition to its construction. That it'd be hard for them to walk away with a conclusion that, yeah, the neighborhood doesn't mind that this is something on the horizon.
Anything else, sir?
Uh, no, that's it. Thank you.
Appreciate, appreciate, Mr. Bronson. I appreciate your testimony. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition?
Yes, next we have five four one three eight nine. You'll hear two beeps. Please proceed.
Hello?
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 I hear you.
Oh, great. Um, Deborah Curl, seven oh three Northwest Stone Pine Drive, Bend, Oregon. I'd like
Go ahead, please.
I'd like to begin um, by, as it's just a matter of housekeeping, I submitted a letter this morning and I just want to make certain it's become a part of the record for this hearing.
I'm going to ask uh, Ms. Kennedy because I reviewed the E Plans record uh, probably about seven, seven thirty this morning, so I'm not sure. I'm trying to pull it up real quick.
I don't think I, I don't think it probably uh, hit her office until eight forty-five.
Okay, then, then I will look at it, Ms. Cole. I don't know. Ms., Ms. Kennedy?
It's Curl, C U R L.
I'm sorry. Ms. Kennedy, do you know if we've received it?
We have. I have, I was able to upload while I was um, at the very last minute, two application, two emails I received right before the meeting and they are uploaded to all three applications.
Great. Thank you, Heidi.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Cole.
Um, second, I would like to uh, pretty much ditto everything that Jeff Rhodes had to say. And I'd like to place specific emphasis on the fact that the um, photographers' renditions in the um, in the um, applicant's narrative or burden of proof. I, I can't be assured that those are truly reflective of what this proposed monopine is going to look like. And I would like to see something um, entered into the record to help you make the decision as to what it's really, uh, what this site's really going to look like. I also noticed in the um, document that it says, and I'm trying to find it here. I thought I wasn't going to be up next, but um, that this is going to, the, the new or the, the type of monopine that they're proposing is going to completely obscure all antennas, wires, everything um, that supports the tower and the antennas. And I would like to see the hearings officer um, put something into some sort of a condition of approval that requires more than simply substantial adherence to that promise, that there would be some kind of a penalty, if you will, if they don't comply with that, as in the tower has to come down. Because this, this is a bit, that's a big thing to put into a document, to say that all the antennas, all the wires, everything that supports that tower is going to be obscured from view. Excuse me. I have a frog in my throat. Um, lastly, um, I wa, I'm wondering um, it where, how, how tall the light is going to be that they're going to put on this property that's going to supposedly be directed downward um, to the equipment. I can't, there doesn't seem to be anywhere in the document where it talks about the impact from the exact location of the light. Um, the last thing, and I don't know if we're going to have it, an opportunity to talk about this at the end. I think we probably will. But um, I'm, I'm leaning towards um, requesting the record to remain open for a few days. I don't want to get into trouble with the shot clock for the FCC shot clock nor with the Oregon review period. Um, looks to me like right now we're on day twenty-six of the Oregon and forty-eight of the one fifty for the shot clock. And I'm keeping that in mind. I um, I'm, I'm considering that that might be a, a good thing to do with this application after this meeting. And I think that's it.
All right, um, let me just, in, this is one of those things where we can't be half in and half out. Uh, you're, you're either going to be requesting the record to remain open or you're not.
Do I need to do it during this timeframe or is it something that I can do at a later time?
You know, and I apologize. I thought, I thought I'd, I'd covered that better and apparent, obviously, I didn't. Um, uh, during testimony uh, is, is when most people ask. Uh, and, and the ask isn't so much just an ask. It is a, and I'm not trying to be negative to any side. It's more of a demand. Because once they make that demand, it's, it's, it's a done deal. It's, it's, the bell's rung. If somebody asks, the record will remain open. If no one asks, then the record will not remain open. And it's highly unusual for me to, on my own motion or decision to, to, to ask people to come back and talk about that at the end. So from that perspective, I apologize uh, that you, if you want that request to be made, I'm asking I'm asking you make it now.
Procedurally, if the opposition asks for the record to remain open, then it counts against the clock. And if the applicant asks for the record to be open, it does not count against the clock, correct?
That's correct. Do you mind if I, and I apologize to both the applicant and anyone else, uh, as well as Ms. Kennedy, but, um, I can, I, I'm, I'm willing to ask on your behalf, whether or not, uh, a 21-day, uh, actually it'd be 42 days. If 42 days, which would include the open record period as well as, as my decision-making time, is that going to put us in jeopardy of violating either the, the county's one, or the city's 120-day clock or the, uh, federal shot clock? Ms. Kennedy?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question. Can you say that again, please?
Yeah, I, I'm sorry. How tight on, I'm just going to rephrase it. How tight are we on the shot clock and the, and the, and the, uh, city's time clock?
Um, I think, I believe Ms. Curl's estimate on the times were correct. Um, I'm looking at the dates from last week's, um, staff report. I had estimated we were only at day 19 of the 120-day review period last Tuesday and only at day 41 of the 150-day FCC shot clock time limit. So I think we're fairly good at this point.
Okay, and, and thank you, Ms. Kennedy. That was based on review of the staff report, uh, showed, uh, plenty of time, uh, at least for me to make a decision whether or not, uh, there's an additional appeal to the city council or whatever. I'll, I'm not even going to get into that. So, uh, I'm going back to you, Ms. Curl. It does not appear that there is a, a, uh, critical time issue with respect to keeping the record open, but that is not meant to be, uh, a official position of the city. It's just my observation at this point.
Sure. Um, uh, and did I hear you say that it would need to be open for 21 days?
Well, typically what I find to be the fairest is I keep the record open for seven days for new evidence, seven days for responsive evidence and seven days for the, uh, applicant. And, uh, under at least the, the state law for the, which, which respects the, the city, is the final, I don't believe the final seven-day rebuttal period counts against, uh, the shot clock. Mr. Connor will certainly correct me on that if I'm wrong.
Okay.
That's where I came up with the 21 days and that was just, I was trying to look at a worst-case scenario. If it takes me 21 days to do my decision and the record was open for 21 days, I still don't think, just to my initial observation, that we're, we're, we're pushing, uh, the shot clock issue.
Okay. I, I believe I, I'm going to withdraw that. I just had further thought about it, um, with the amount that I put into the record this morning. Um, I, I'm going to withdraw that request.
Okay. I respect that, uh, and I'm glad we had the discussion. For those who are not familiar with this whole shot clock business, it can be quite serious, uh, for a city, uh, to take longer than the state allows it or the federal government allows it to make a decision. And the consequences are not typically beneficial to the opposition, but that's just a general statement. So, I appreciate very much Ms. Curl's, uh, knowledge, uh, as well, as well as her, her concern. So, no requests for the record to remain open has been made at this time. Anything else, Ms. Curl?
There is. There was one thing that I'd forgotten that I wanted to bring to your attention. I, I wrote, put it into my letter today, but just, it's something that I think should be discussed. And that is, um, one of the people brought up earlier that, um, and I think it was, I think it was my, uh, Mr. Connors, that this, the, the need for a tower at this particular site is based on the need generated by the high school. And it, um, let me find it here just real quick. In the, um, in the application itself, it says that the need is along the Butler Market Road in the northeast section of Bend. There is no reference at all to the high school. The only reference to the high school is in a letter that was resp, that the applicant submitted in response to the city's deeming the application incomplete. And at that time, they stated that it was due to needing to, um, offload some things because the high school, of the demand of the high school, and even talked about if it could get closer to the high school, that would be great. But when it came to the actual application itself and the narrative or the burden of proof in two places, it speaks to the fact that what needs, what they need to resolve are issues along the Butler Market Road. Now, this site is south of the Butler Market Road. And it would certainly seem to me at a, a, a site that would be slightly north of the Butler Market Road, such as the park or the U.S. Forest Service, or even just down around the corner, at the corner of the Schutz Market and, um, Butler Market, where there is now a piece of CG zoned property that is just being developed. But one of those sites might be adequate if they are really trying to serve the population that they're talking about in their application. Not the, not the population that Mr. Connors was addressing today with the high school, but what's in their tr, what's, what's really in their application? Because there's no mention of the high school in the, um, how big is, how many pages is in this document that they submitted? About 40 pages or so? And that's where it's, it's all related to activity along the Butler Market Road. That's the last comment I have.
Thank you very much for your comments. Um, is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Yes, we do have a few more. Mr. Frank, with your permission, I would like to, uh, we had some, uh, members of the public joining us, uh, after we provided instructions. See if okay if I remind everyone how to raise their hand?
Please do.
Yes, um, hello, everyone. For those of you who joined us, um, late today, um, I would like to remind you that, uh, use, please use your keypad on your phone and dial star three to raise your hand. The hearing officer will call on you based in the order that, um, hands were raised. And, uh, we will call on your, uh, phone numbers, area code and prefix. You will hear two beeps and that will signify that you are unmuted. Please provide us with your full name and physical address. Once you are done providing your comment, we ask that you, once again, press star three to lower your hand. Um, now I will proceed with the next person in line here. Uh, I have 541-306. You will hear two beeps. Please proceed.
Hello, this is Doug Griffin. Hello?
Hello?
This is Doug Griffin. I live at, can you hear me okay?
You can't, you're, you're coming loud and clear.
Okay, I live at 3162 Northeast Nathan Drive, Bend, Oregon. Uh, I know you talked about, um, try not to repeat, um, what other people have said, but, uh, so I will try not to do that, but, um, uh, first off, I live in Hunters Highland. Uh, I bought here because of, uh, we are a homeowners association. We have, we have certain rules which were appealing to me when I bought this property. Uh, also, uh, because I come from a place that had, uh, Spokane. I mean, I, I was born and raised in Redmond, but anyway, I lived in Spokane where we had ice storms, had power go out for, you know, almost a week. So, underground power was really important to me. Uh, we don't have any power lines in our neighborhood. We actually do not have even any streetlights. So, the new roundabout, we will have our first streetlight in the neighborhood. And so, it's really important in Hunters Highland that we have rules. And we bought here for a long duration, you know, for, for profit. And, uh, to have something like this decided, and I understand we're in a COVID-19 situation, but this is a very si, serious situation. And then I kind of object to this phone process because I don't think every neighbor has a, have the, has the opportunity then to testify. And, because this is something that just, once it's decided, it's here to stay. And so, this is for a long period of time. And so, it's very serious. And I find it highly unlikely that that tower, I guess it's 75 feet from the house there on the corner of Jill and Butler Market. And that's all I'm going to say about that. But I, and then the site location, I do find it highly unlikely that just one year ago, I can see why Verizon didn't request this a year ago because the property right across from the store was for sale. And it was for sale for a long time. It would have been a perfect place for their, their site, this, uh, corner all to itself. But no, no, somebody else bought it. Obviously, it wasn't them. And so, we have a little convenience store in our neighborhood. And that is for convenience. It's a, it's a commercial store. It's not for power lines. It's not for Verizon transmission lines. This is something, this is where we live and this is where we raise our kids. And health is important to us. But anyways, and then the problem is that it's going to be a pine tree and there's not a pine tree on the property. There's all juniper trees. And this is where we live. It's juniper. And so, a pine tree is going to look very awkward next to a whole bunch of juniper trees. Uh, so anyway, uh, and then the other thing I really have a hard thing understanding is the site location. Now, the school, this is going to obviously work out great for them. So, they have a lot of property. They could build the thing in the back of the school where it wouldn't be an eyesore, and it's going to benefit them. They said no. And then the city that owns the park, they said no. But now this is on us. So, they've decided that, well, we'll just put it in this location. Well, this is where we live. People don't live there at the Forest Service office. They don't live at the school. We live here 24/7. And then the willingness landlord, I used to be a landlord, of course he's going to say yes. Now, I've had renters that all my other tenants hated them. The landlord's going to make money, so of course, he's going to say yes. So, he shouldn't even have a say in this. Okay, and then, I'm sorry, it's, uh, it's very, um, this is a very serious time. We're in a very serious pandemic. And again, I do want to, uh, object to the type of meeting we have. I don't think that it's fair for the rest of the neighbors. And I think that, um, that this thing should stay open because there is some more evidence. I think that we should, um, be able to submit or for us to at least be able to look at. And, uh, I hope at the end of the meeting that that question is asked. That's all I have to say.
All right, Mr. Griffin, uh, you're pointing out, as, as did your preceding person who testified, perhaps something that I didn't, um, explain as clearly as, as I should have. Uh, and that's why I took so much time with Ms. Curl's question about keeping the record open is that the record, uh, there's not going to be a discussion at the end of this hearing about whether or not the, the record will remain open. The obligation is on the person who testifies to make such a request. And I'm telling you that if that's the request that you want to make, it's not something that it should stay open. Are you asking the record to remain open?
Well, I don't have all the evidence. And I would like to hear what other people have to say first and, uh, before I make a decision.
Okay, I'm telling you now, I'm not going to come back to you. So, you can either make the request right now to the record remain open or you can hope that potentially somebody else does that.
Well, the way you describe it, I don't understand the shot clock. There again, I don't have all the information. And this is a very serious matter and we're doing it over a phone. So, uh, when you start putting restrictions like that on it, I, I just, I'm sorry. I don't know what the shot clock is. I don't know, there again, um, how this works. I know that Verizon has had, uh, years and years to do, to think about this. And then you're putting a, a time limit on it? I just think it's unfair and I'd like to object to the whole thing.
Understand, Mr. Griffin. Number one, I didn't put the time limit on it. This, the, it's federal law and, and city code as well as state law. So, I'm not the one-
And what does it say in the meeting, uh, where it has to be via phone? Now, we, we're in a COVID situation.
Ms., Ms. Griffin?
Situation like this is very, very important.
Mr. Griffin, I'm going to ask you, stop right there. Uh, I'm going to tell you that from my understanding and Ms. Kennedy, uh, you are, uh, certainly invited at this point in time to, to respond to the reason and the authority, uh, for holding a WebEx platform, uh, hearing. Uh, it seemed to me, I've seen it, I just don't have it sitting right in front of me. Uh, and you may respond to that later if you'd like.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Kennedy, do you have anything you want to add with respect to the WebEx platform meeting?
Not at this point. Um, thank you.
Okay, uh, I'm going to go out of order just a little bit because, uh, there, there apparently is, uh, and, and I'm not sure quite why, but there is apparently some confusion and or concern being expressed with respect to these clocks. And, uh, there is at least one way that I can, uh, avoid any timing issues. And so, Mr. Connor, I'm assuming you're still around?
Hi, Ms. Frank.
Right, okay. Glad I woke you back up. Uh, all right. You could make my life a whole lot easier here. Um, and I don't know what your project timing is on this pro, on this particular one. But if you would agree to request the record remain open, I can keep it for seven and seven if, if you'd like. So, technically, you, you're, you're, your client is extending this process potentially by seven days. Could I get your permission, uh, well, actually, could I get you to request the record remain open for a seven and seven period?
Uh, yes, Mr. Frank. Uh, we, we would like to ask that the record be, uh, left open. I guess I would propose the 777, uh, which would be, you know, seven days for new evidence, a seven-day period for any rebuttal evidence limited to responses to new evidence submitted during the first seven days. And then we would ask an opportunity for a closing argument on the third seven day. Um, and as you indicated by adapting our request, that would allow, uh, for an extension of the, uh, 120 and 150-day shot clocks.
I appreciate that, you know, and, and that's the end of the conversation I'm going to have with you at this point in time. Um, I'm going to go back to Mr. Griffin. Mr. Amadi, could you put Mr. Griffin back on the line or can he get back on?
Hello?
Yeah, Mr. Griffin, you there?
Yes, I'm here.
All right, so what I'm going to explain this, and if I'd done this with Ms. Curl, it probably would have, it might have changed her, her position. But I've eliminated the time concerns that anyone may have uh, with respect to the record remain open. And I want you to understand, Mr. Connors has now requested the record remain open. So, you don't have to do that, all right? Uh, and so, at the end of the hearing, I will be talking about the logistics of the open record period in which you can submit as well as anyone else may submit. record period in which you can submit as well as anyone else may submit evidence into the public record of this case of which I can consider in, in making my decision. Do you understand that?
Yes. And is there a way that we can, um, ask for evidence, uh, like the first gentleman, uh, talked about was the site locations?
You can certainly request any information you want, whether or not it's provided by the applicant or any other party is, is, is beyond my control. I have no, it, this isn't like a courtroom where I can actually issue a, an order, uh, that somebody produce a document or, or subpoena witness. I can't do that. Uh, but your request is so noted and I think Mr. Connor, uh, Connors has been put on notice as well as the, the applicant's team, uh, the kind of information that both Mr. Rhodes and you have made, uh, in this case.
Okay. Thank you for your help.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Mr. Almeida?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Frank. Next we have, um, six oh nine, five, five, eight. You'll hear two beeps. Proceed with your comment.
Oh, um, yeah, this is, uh, Justin Bronson again. I apologize to that. I don't remember, um, raising my hand a second time.
Oh, okay.
But at the same time.
Uh, if you can.
Yeah, no, I mean, but.
Present.
But I would like to echo, um, really quick. Doug is a neighbor of mine and he's actually, we drive right across the street from where my family lives. And I would like to echo what he said as far as, um, you know, interest in the community, interest in the neighborhood, investment into property, all of that. Um, our neighborhood is what some suburban neighborhood, you have properties owned by individuals who don't live here and they rent it out. That is not an abnormality to Central Oregon since it is a destination market. You do get outside investors that buy property and then rent to, um, short-term tenants. Um, but for, I've been here for 10 years. Um, I know Doug's been here for longer than that, uh, if not right around the same time period. And, um, the majority maybe, man, 95% of the property owners within our neighborhood who, um, are directly arguably the most proximate to the proposed site for this tower. Um, we've, we've invested with the interest, um, that this property would actually grow in value long-term. Um, that has kind of been under some, uh, attack, if you will, uh, different changes to the market, financial, um, uncertainty, things like that regarding COVID and even, um, with financial crisis about 10 years ago, different things. Um, anyways, um, our, our investment to this community is a long-term stake. It's a long-term investment and I just want to echo what Doug said, that the other parties involved, this is a, this is a momentary thing for them. This is a, this is a decision on a small timeline. I know maybe they've been working on it for a few years, um, but it's, it's a part of their job. It's a part of their work for the applicant. It's a part of their growth strategy for their business model. I work professionally in brand consulting, so I understand, um, the applicant's interests in this are purely financial. I totally see that and I get that. Uh, but the financial interest is coming at the compromise and at the expense of those who live here. Um, and I personally don't believe in the philosophy, uh, that financial gain should come at the detriment of others.
Thank you, sir. And for those of you, uh, I, I let Mr. Bronson continue with that despite the fact that he'd already testified. I appreciate his testimony, but I'm not going to be having others testify more than one time that, that aren't hot in the group of, uh, that I've talked about proceeding. Mr. Almeida, let's get somebody for the first time.
All right. We have, uh, five, four, one, nine, two, three. You'll hear two beeps. Please proceed.
I have not heard two beeps.
Five, four, one, nine, two, three. You are unmuted now?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
I'm here.
All right.
Hello?
Hi.
Sorry, I'm, I'm at work, so trying to do two things at one time. My name is Jill Crafton and I am calling.
Your last name, spell your last.
Sure. It's C-R-A-F as in Frank, T-O-N.
Go ahead. And your address?
Uh, the business address is two, five, six, five, Northeast Butler Market Road.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay. Hi, I am calling, I am employed by Bluefish Dental and Orthodontic. The owner of that building, Dr. Catherine Claws is currently with patients, so I'm stepping in for her. And we are just wanting to, first of all, mirror and, and agree with what everyone has said before us. We don't have a vested interest financially as far as homes because we don't live in that area. We do have the business there at Bluefish Dental. So we are, uh, we basically share a parking lot with the subject property. So our concerns are similar to what everyone else is, is concerning health and the visibility of the tower and, um, how it looks in the neighborhood. And then additionally, uh, which other people haven't spoken about, but probably don't relate to them, is with us in our area, in that parking lot, we share that parking lot with the coffee kiosk, the grocery store in front of us, uh, Bluefish Dental ourselves, and then the businesses that are in front of us, which would be like a hair salon, a gun shop, I believe, and Big O Babels. So we all share that parking lot in the back and there are a lot of delivery trucks that come into that area and they're big, they're semi trucks that come in to deliver and have a hard time with all the people parking back there getting turned around. So I had a couple of questions I couldn't tell, um, in the paperwork that we got in the mail concerning this conditional use permit, if that enclosure and that cell tower takes away at all from our parking lot?
I will ask, could, to respond to that at the, during their rebuttal.
Okay. That would be helpful. So that's a concern. Um, but bottom line is, you know, we're in the back of a parking lot of a grocery store. So it already isn't the most scenic area to have your business facing. So that's a concern that now we're going to add a cell phone tower that's going to look completely out of its place along with this big fence and the space, all of that. That's included. We also have a lot of traffic in that parking lot from the high school, you know, when COVID isn't happening and they're actually going to high school. We have a lot of kids coming through there at lunchtime, before and after school and hanging out. So I would just also be concerned about any safety issues with having, uh, lots of high school students in and, in and around that area where that cell phone tower is going to be. We're a pediatric office, so also again, concerned about health concerns. I'm, I heard you talk about that that doesn't really matter as long as the federal guidelines are met, but it's still a concern for us. We are a pediatric practice, so we see all kids in our office. And of course, Trinity Lutheran School is right across the street as well. So those are mainly our concerns about the, the cell phone tower. I'm just checking my notes. Yep, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate your testimony. Um, Mr. Almeida?
Next we have five, six, two, six, eight, six. You will hear two beeps. You may proceed with your comment.
Hi, my name is Nathan Springer. And that's S-P-R-I-N-G-E-R. And I'm at three, two, six, two, Northeast Bain Street.
Go ahead, sir.
If I can proceed. Thank you.
You may.
Uh, thank you. So I just want to, uh, unfortunately I don't have any additional evidence, uh, to submit. I do want to echo the evidence, uh, and the community concerns that have been expressed very eloquently by a number of previous callers, uh, specifically the, the potential for, uh, property value losses, for health risks that are unknown, of course. And, uh, and then also add to, uh, some of the comments that have been made about, uh, really the mismatch of the, the height of this structure to, to all surrounding areas, which of course will, will contribute to the visual impacts, the community character and of course the, the property values. It's, um, for those of us who live on the east side of that structure, uh, it will be immediately visible in our views of the mountain there and therefore have, um, impacts on future buyers who, who are considering whether they want to, to live in this neighborhood. I think the, the one thing that I would add is, um, related to the, to the, the, what I call disproportionate, uh, distribution of the risks and benefits here. Uh, clearly the benefits will entirely accrue to the, the property owners and to Verizon. Uh, whereas all of the risks, uh, and the burden of potential risk, both the property values and, and, uh, and health risks and, um, you know, other factors that have been well articulated, all of those are being borne by the residents and the businesses in, in this area. Of course, the, to understand or what I've heard at least is that there are some land use, uh, state and federal laws that, um, require a, uh, some level of, of evidence and substantiation, uh, for these types of risks, both market-based and, and health-based. And yet we're the ones as the property owners and the people who live and work in this neighborhood, um, who, who are, are most burdened by that, are most impacted because we cannot, we don't have the resources, of course, to, uh, pull together a full 40, 50, $60,000 market study, uh, health studies specific to this project. Um, so to me, you know, in the, in the, uh, in the, um, I guess what I would say is, you know, given these risks and this disproportionate sharing of the risks to the residents and the, um, and the, uh, the, the other businesses in the area, I would encourage the city to, to err on the side of caution and to side in favor of those who have to bear those risks, uh, whether or not the, the, the full, um, technical and scientific and market evidence can be submitted otherwise. So that's my comment. Um, and again, I reiterate everything else that has been said by, uh, all of the other people submitting evidence. Thank you.
Sir, I appreciate your testimony very much. Very well said. Uh, next person, Mr. Almeida?
I do not see anybody else who is new, Mr. Frank.
Okay. At this point in time, if you have not spoken, have not spoken and wish to provide me with some testimony or evidence, could you make sure you raise your hand or whatever is necessary? It's, uh, if you're on the telephone star three, if you're on WebEx, raise your hand. This is kind of like going once, going twice. We're in the auction period where we're just about ready to accept a bid. Mr. Almeida, anybody?
Uh, we do have one new person. I have eight, five, eight, five, three, one. You'll hear two beeps and please proceed with your comment.
Hi, my name is Barbara, and I live at two, one, three, one, zero, Northeast Brooklyn Court. And I'm in direct opposition with this cell tower. Uh, my children do go to Trinity Lutheran School and there have been a lot of risks involved with these cell towers. And, um, I want to know if Mountain View High School is requesting for this cell tower for their school, why are they putting it closer, like directly across the street from the school where I have two children who attend there? And they're putting everybody's health at risk, people who are directly look behind them, people who work in the stores. Um, there's a lot of evidence and I'd be happy to send it to the evidence to you that I have found. Um, I'm, certainly y'all know the Robert J. Kennedy. He, um, has an attorney by the name of Daphna. And, um, Daphna Tackover is her name. And she's provided a lot of evidence, um, for the health issues that have come about even in Oregon, in the state of Oregon. Um, and I tried to download the, the information that she had provided, but, um, it's no longer available. Somebody removed it and, um, it's just, um, creepy what goes on with the cell tower usage and with the health. They can have issues from, um, cancer to, um, to autoimmune diseases. Um, there's so many things that can happen to different children, um, depends on their, their bodies and, um, what they can tolerate. And, um, so my concerns and the reason why I oppose it is because, um, this attorney has proven with evidence and yet people who want to have installed it in the, why is this community? I can understand their need for it, but why do you want to install this where there's a neighborhood where there's businesses and a school that goes from kindergarten to 12th grade? I, I just am really concerned about that and I think it's not, I don't think it's acceptable. I mean, I just don't see why they can't put it somewhere else, like, you know, Mountain View High School. So that's my concern and that's what I have to say about it. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to provide testimony or evidence at this time that has not yet spoken? Mr. Almeida?
I do not see anybody else new, Mr. Frank.
All right. Thank you. Uh, this would be the time and the place for Ms. Kennedy to provide me any, or excuse, yeah, Ms. Ms. Kennedy to provide any final comments.
I have no final comments at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Connors, anybody on your team wish to have, take advantage of final rebuttal? There's been a number of questions which you're not required to answer, but if you wish to respond, you may.
Uh, yes, thank you, Ms. Frank. Again, for the record, Mike Connors is here on behalf of the applicant. Um, as I indicated earlier, we, you know, did request that the record be left open. So we'll address some of questions, in particular Ms. Curl's letter, uh, which, uh, we haven't had an opportunity review because it was submitted, uh, shortly before the hearing. Uh, but we will address some of those in further detail. But I did want to take this opportunity to just, uh, address a few issues that came up in the comments, uh, so you can have our perspective. Um, first of all, there were a couple of procedural objections that were raised with respect to the neighborhood meeting as well as the use of a telephonic, uh, hearing. Um, on the neighborhood meeting, I think you, uh, pinpointed a key issue and that is, uh, there's a specific code requirement, 4.1, 1.2 and 5. Um, we complied with that. Uh, that particular provision does not require a certain type of, uh, neighborhood meeting. Uh, and it is our, uh, common practice to use, uh, the open house type meeting because we find that that allows for more opportunity for a wider variety of people to be able to ask questions, have more one-on-one conversations and get more specific information versus a presentation, uh, where some people don't feel comfortable speaking at, or some people tend to dominate, uh, those particular conversations. Um, and, um, that is consistent with the, uh, city code requirements, uh, for neighborhood meetings. Um, in terms of this telephonic process, um, I don't believe that there's a legal basis for objecting to it. Um, as you probably know, Mr. Frank, uh, these telephonic hearings, uh, both land use and other administrative and court hearings are taking place all across the state and I'm sure the country, uh, because of the COVID-19 situation sheltered in. Um, and I'm not aware of any legal basis that will require that, uh, we wait until the COVID-19 situation is resolved, um, so that we can do in-person. Nor, nor do I believe it's necessary because really the, uh, procedural, uh, rights that people are entitled to is an opportunity to hear from the parties in this proceeding, hear from you, testify, um, ask questions, et cetera. And, uh, I believe that this forum allows for that. And so therefore, um, we don't believe that there's any procedural objection there. Um, in terms of, there was some testimony about, you know, do we really need it and why are we, uh, placing this in a densely populated area? I think it was Mr. Rhodes who asked that. Um, well, that, that kind of answers the question. Um, because it's a capacity site, meaning that the, uh, greater amount of data traffic that there is, the more there is need to be able to ensure that we have towers to accommodate, uh, when a system gets overloaded. That's precisely why we need, um, a tower in this area. And, um, in terms of, uh, the need, you know, that comes up oftentimes in, in these hearings, people will question whether there is a need. And we believe that, you know, we submitted evidence to demonstrate there is a need, but I always like to just kind of put it in practical terms and that is, um, there would be no reason that we would be going through this process, which is expensive, uh, which takes quite a bit of time. Um, and quite frankly, you know, any kind of proposal like this is going to attract some, um, community, uh, objection or opposition. Those are customers, potential customers of ours. Those are customers, or potential customers of ours. Verizon really has no incentive to do this, other than to make sure that we can accommodate all the needs of the community and address the capacity deficiency we have. But again, we're not relying on that statement, we're relying on our evidence in the record to, that shows the need, including the propagation maps, which clearly show that there's a deficiency here. Sometimes it's helpful, I find, to kind of frame it that way so people can understand. You know, again, there would be no reason we'd be going through this process if there wasn't truly a need for a facility to accommodate the, the capacity deficiency. In terms of some of the alternate sites that we looked at, I think I addressed that before, but there was some specific testimony at the Pine Nursery, Forest Services Department, et cetera. We did look at that, and as our, our F engineer indicated in the density map, some middle. The problem with that is that those sites are too far to the north. I did want to clarify one thing. I'm sorry, I didn't get Barbara's last name, but the last person who testified, you know, suggested that if the Mountain View High School is asking for this, they should accommodate the tower. They're not asking for it, it's not a specific property owner or user that's asking for it, it's based on our internal data and, you know, customer complaints that we receive in general that identifies that there's a deficiency, and then we investigate it and based on that investigation determine whether there's a need and how to, how to address that need. The reference to the high school was merely that, that's the area where there's, the high school and surrounding area where there's the highest demand of traffic, and that's the primary sort of objective that we're looking at, ensuring that is covered in this. And by going further to the north, like the Pine Nursery or Forest Services Department property, that's going to not enable us to be able to offload the traffic in that high, high-use area. In terms of the visual impacts, you know, there was some testimony about the use of the monopine stealth facility, whether it's the best use here. And again, we're, we're subject to the standards in the, in the City of Bend Development Code, and the code specifically requires carriers to use these stealth facilities as a preference. So we're following the code, although we do believe particularly in this location with the other trees and mature vegetation, that it's a prime location for this type of facility, this design of stealth facility, but it really is the Bend code that determines and encourages us to, to do that. In terms of some of the photos, there was some, some question about that. We did provide a picture of a real tower, that's the same type of tower we're using in page eighteen of our application. So that's an actual tower, so we did provide that. In terms of the photo sim that we provided, again, the Bend code requires us to provide photo sims. And what has been, it is, the tower is photoshopped into that photo that Mr. Rose was referring to, which is required. That's what a photo sim is. You take a photo of the existing area and then photo, you know, create a photo simulation by photoshopping a picture of the tower into that photo. We confirmed while we were in this hearing with the company that did the photo sims for this, that that is an actual picture of the monopine. It is not, it is not an actual pine tree, it is the monopine. So that photo sim is in fact an accurate reflection or simulation of what it would look like, and that's required under the code. There was a question about the light, how tall the light is, and I just want to clarify, this is not a tower that's going to require any sort of aviation-related lighting at the top of the tower, which is far more visible. But lighting is really more for when the technician is in doing their maintenance to have a light to be able to see what they're doing. That light's six foot and projects downward, through the city code requirement. I won't repeat in terms of, you know, you heard some testimony about the property value, health effects, you heard some testimony about, you know, benefits versus risk, et cetera. And I think I addressed the first two issues, and the latter issue really is similar, and that is, you know, and as you know, Mr. Frank, I don't mean to be lecturing on this, but I think it's helpful just for people to, to understand that, you know, when we go in with an application, the city establishes the standards. We're required to meet those and provide evidence to meet those, but we don't, we don't create the standards, we're just required to follow them. And so I think a lot of concerns that people raise, you know, may be more about the standards as opposed to what we're proposing, because, you know, it is allowed use in the zone. It does require us to try to look towards non-residential properties, and, you know, we have a need in this particular area. A lot of times I hear in these applications, people, you know, understandably say, why don't you put it somewhere else where there's not very many people around? Well, that was true in sort of the first wave of these wireless towers, but as we've increased the population, increased the use of wireless devices, and increased the type of data flow as a result of how we use those wireless devices, now carriers are required to start infilling in some of those more densely populated areas to make sure that everyone can be accommodated, and that's why in this case it's a capacity. And it makes it difficult for carriers because it's just not technologically possible to put towers in remote locations in order to be able to address usage or capacity overload in densely populated areas. And so that's what this facility is for, and, you know, we believe under the circumstances that we've done, you know, identified the best site available to be able to meet our objectives, and really tried to design in a way that would minimize the impacts on surrounding properties, you know, understanding that there will be some impact, but, you know, there needs to be a use for cell towers and for people to be able to continue to use their wireless devices, phones, et cetera. And, you know, so again, I think hopefully people can understand, we're just following the standards that the city established. And on that note, I do a lot of this work around the states, and I can say that I think in many regards, the Bend code is consistent with a lot of the standards I see, so it's not a situation where the Bend standards are more lax. If anything, I think they're more rigorous. And so in that case, you know, we, again, did the best we could to try to find the best site and satisfy the code, and we believe that we've done that. And so with that, that concludes my rebuttal, and we will address some of the issues further in the open record process as well. And I'm, of course, happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time, though.
All right, thank you, Mr. Connors. Appreciate all the testimony that's been received by all persons involved. That includes Mr. Connors on behalf of the applicant, the staff representative, Ms. Kennedy, and all of those speaking either neutral or, or in, in opposition. I think you all did a really good job of identifying what issues are important to you, and I appreciate that very much. Just as a final note before I talk about the scheduling and the logistics, as I promised I would do regarding the open record period, I want to just reiterate that I am a decision-maker in a quasi-judicial hearing that's required to follow the rules and the rules and laws, in other words, the relevant approval criteria in effect at the time of this case. And so I'm not here and do not have the authority or the power to change, in Mr. Connors' language, the standards. I can't add standards, I can't delete standards, I can't even modify standards. My job is to take a look at what, and make the decision as to what relevant standards apply, and then look at the evidence to see whether or not the applicant has met its burden of proof to show that those standards have been met. So when I make my decision, that's what I'm going to try to do my best. No one's perfect, but I'm going to do my best. I will read what you provide into the record, whether or not it's already been submitted or is submitted during the open record period, and I will consider that in making my decisions. So if you have a pencil and paper handy, or some other way to take notes, here's, here's the schedule that we're going to follow in, as far as the open record period. And I'm going to try to be really clear about the first two time periods and what's supposed to do during those time periods. All right, so the first time period is what we refer to as the open evidence period. In other words, anyone may submit, and I use the word anyone, that doesn't require that person to have been involved in this hearing today. Anyone may submit new evidence, evidence into the record, a document into the record by 5:00 PM on July 21st, 2020. And just before I do make that statement, I just want to double-check with, with Ms. Kennedy, because I'm going to talk to her just briefly with the rest of you. Is 5:00 still the time that's the bewitching hour?
Our offices close at 4:00 PM.
Okay, so what time do you want me to close the record for new evidence?
Please close it at 4:00 PM on the 21st of July.
Will do, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I stand corrected. The record for new evidence will close at 4:00 PM on July 21st, 2020. The record for rebuttal evidence, and I'll talk about that in a sec, closes at 4:00 PM on July 28th, 2020, and I'm going to come back to that. And the record for applicant, an applicant-only's final argument will close at 4:00 PM August 4th. I'm just making a note for myself, sorry. All right, let's talk about what happens during that first period, which ends on July 21st. Anyone may submit evidence which they want me to consider in making my decision. The second week, which closes on July 28th, that period of time is for anyone to respond to whatever happened during that first week. So I would prefer only responsive evidence during the second time period. The second time period is not limited to just applicant, it's not limited just opposition, that's the any one kind of person that may submit during that time period. The, the third time period, only the applicant is allowed to submit their final rebuttal under state law. Final argument and rebuttal restricts what's in that is in any submitted during that week, and it does not include any new evidence. Mr. Connors has, I believe, heard this spiel before, but I will tell you, Mr. Connors, that if I see any new evidence during the final argument rebuttal week submission, though what I do with it, even though that it goes on to the public record at the City of Bend, what I do is I put it in the brown envelope and don't read it. So my caution to you is that you be very careful that anything that you're doing in that is final argument, as defined in the statute, and nothing beyond. So this is the final, I'm going to ask Ms. Kennedy to, to comment, if she would, to all of you as to where you get information into the public record. Some of you may think that you send it directly to me, not true. Some of it may, somebody may think that you might have to send it to the applicant or the opposition, that's very nice of you, but not necessary. The information is to be sent to the City of Bend. Ms. Kennedy, would you tell them how they do that?
Yes, please. Please email me directly, as a lot of people have already been doing. My contact information is on the notice or on our City of Bend website. Also, our office hours are Monday through Friday from nine to four, and that's the permit center, but it is closed due to the local state of emergency. But there is a phone number on the door of City Hall that you can call during our office hours, and there's a few people in the building who will come out and they can date stamp your information if you have something to hand in. And I will, I will scan that and upload that to the eplans file as soon as I'm able. And those are the two options, to email me or to deliver something to City Hall during the office hours from nine to four, when we do have bodies that are available to take in from nation, and that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. All right, this is the last opportunity for anyone to speak. I'm going to give anyone, I opened up the floor totally, but the only thing that you can talk about, the only thing you can talk about is, how do I get information to the City of Bend in a timely manner? Does anybody have any questions about that? Mr. Almeida?
Yes, Mr. Frank, I still see hands from earlier, so at this point, what I would like to ask from everyone is to lower your hands by pressing star three, and then if you have questions regarding Mr. Frank's comments, please walk ahead and raise your hand by pressing star three. So I'm going to give...
Okay, I'm going to reiterate what Mr. Almeida said. Put your hands down if you would, please. If you're on telephone, star three, put your hands down, and then I'm going to wait like ten or fifteen seconds, and then put your hand back up if you have a question regarding how you get information into the public record during the first record period, which ends on the 21st, the second record period, which ends on the 28th, and the third record period, which ends on the 4th. Is anybody, any questions about how you get information into the record? Mr. Almeida?
All right, I'll, thank you, Mr. Frank. I'll start with seven oh two five nine five. You'll hear two beeps, please proceed.
Go ahead, please.
This is Jeff Rhodes. Submitting large documents, is that something that can be done over Dropbox? Or is that something the city was not able to access? And should everything be considered usable if it's attached, if it's an attachment? If I, for example, if I took images or something along those lines and wanted to include an attachment, but yet it was too large for the city to receive because you use Dropbox?
Ms. Kennedy, could you respond to that, please? Because I honestly don't know the answer.
I, it may be too large. I think at this point, the safest thing would be to send me multiple emails and clarify that in your email and break up your information.
Understood, thank you.
So Rhodes, does that answer your question?
One hundred percent, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else has a question about the logistics of getting information into the record?
All right, next we have five four one three eight nine. You'll hear two beeps, please proceed.
Who am I speaking to?
I'm going to walk ahead and mute you, you'll hear one beep, and then unmute you again, so you...
Oh?
Oh, go ahead, yes.
Hi, my name is Deborah Curl, and I am, my question is specific to the audio or video recording of this meeting. Will that be placed in the record anywhere for us to be able to view or obtain for future use? Will that be submitted to the record? Will someone be doing that?
Ms. Curl, that's a really good question. I'm going to ask Ms. Kennedy to respond to that one as well.
This is my first public hearing with the WebEx hearings officer. Juan, is that able to be uploaded? That's not able to be uploaded to eplans, but we do have a YouTube video that's going right now for it, and so that should be able to be located on, correct?
I tried to get into it about three or four times, and it's denied me access each time today.
Mr. Almeida?
Interesting, I am playing it live right now, just to make sure that it's working, and it has been working throughout the meeting. However, Heidi, for your questions, what I will do, once WebEx is done formatting the recording, I will send you a link and a password to access the recording so that you can...
Great.
...upload that to eplans. And then, yeah, you are correct, the MP4s that are... upload that to ePlans, and then, yeah, you, you are correct, the MP4s that are produced by WebEx will not be able to be uploaded to ePlans, but you can publish that link and password, and the recording will be transcribed and closed caption. And also, if you want to just republish that YouTube link, the YouTube video will be available for replay, you know, on demand at any time after the meeting as well, so.
All right. Thank you.
Does that answer your question, Ms. Curl?
Yes, yes, it does. Thank you very much.
Ms. Kennedy? Yes, Ms. Kennedy, do you have something further?
I think that I will pass on the link and the password and, and the YouTube on-demand information to anybody who asks. But it sounds like I am unable to put the MP4 information in our ePlans system, so thank you very much.
That's, okay, that's excellent. I appreciate that very much. Any other questions about the logistics?
Next I have 541-306. Walk ahead after the two beeps, please.
Who am I speaking to?
I was just trying to lower my hand, sorry.
We're, we're, we're all still getting used to this, Mr. Griffin, so it's, there's no need for an apology. Anyone else?
Next we have 562-686. You'll hear two beeps. Please proceed.
Go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, I don't know how that happened, but I have no further comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Last, we have 858-531. Hear two beeps. Go ahead, please.
I don't have it. Um, yes, I didn't have my hand up. I don't know why it went up.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
And I'll do this one, one, just in case, 702-595. Hear two beeps. Go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, I thought I took my hand down.
There has to be a little bit of smile going on here, because it's, it is a new process. So anyone else's hand up, please?
That's all I see, Mr. Frank.
All right, I want to thank you all for participating. And I'm only going to make one final comment, and I, and, and this comes as, as a sincere comment from me. No one prefers to have in-person hearings more than I do, because it allows me, as the hearings officer, to look you in the eye when you're testifying, and I get, I, I, it just, it feels more, it's more personal. But I will tell you, having, having done this for a really long time, probably done 500 land use hearings, that probably the most often comment that I receive at land use hearings in person, particularly daytime land use hearings, hearings, is that having a daytime land use hearing precludes the opportunity for many persons to participate. And as much as I mu, I prefer the in-person hearing process because it's, it's much more personal, quite honestly, I, I'm, I'm becoming aware that the participation level and the opportunity for participation level, such as the person at the dentist's office, who was at work trying to do two different things, which you couldn't have done if it had been an in-person hearing. I'm starting to believe that perhaps this gives even more people an opportunity, rather than less, to, to fully and, and actively participate in these hearings. So I just want to thank you all for, for, for this process. The record, as I indicated, will remain open for new evidence until July 21st at 4:00 PM. Ms. Kennedy has given you two options, email or hand in things by 4:00 o'clock. The rebuttal evidence is open until July 28th at 4:00 o'clock, same methods. And Ms. Connors, you have until August 4th at 4:00 o'clock to submit your final rebuttal. I'm going to use this as an opportunity to say thank you for all participating. I am now going to close the oral portion of the hearing. The written portion or the documenta, documentary portion of the hearing will remain open, as I just described. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frank.